[inaudible]
[inaudible] Excused, Alderman Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
Here.
Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Anderson, would you lead us, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes of 10 to 18, as everybody had a chance to review them. There's no omissions, errors, corrections. Motion, please.
Lorick will move to approve the minutes of 10 to 18.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item four is a recognition, it's a resolution of appreciation to our retiring plant operator. Catherine, are you ready? Can you please read that into the record?
Certainly. Resolution number 11990-101618, resolution of appreciation to Brad R. Buchanan. Whereas Brad R. Buchanan was an extensive background in the water industry, began his employment with the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility on May 15, 1986, as a full-time treatment plant operator. And whereas Brad R. Buchanan faithfully served as a second shift plant operator for many years. And whereas Brad R. Buchanan was responsible for ensuring public health by operating the treatment plant to produce award-winning water quality that far exceeded water quality regulations. Whereas Brad R. Buchanan was a dedicated plant operator of this Oak Creek Water Treatment Plant, which has been recognized with the Partnership for Safe Water Phase III Director's Award, and worked during his entire career to maintain the status the utility has held for 20 continuous years. And whereas Brad R. Buchanan was a member of the operating staff of the Oak Creek Water Treatment Plant, which has been recognized as the first plant in the state of Wisconsin, and one of only 19 in the nation to achieve the prestigious Partnership for Safe Water Phase IV President's Award in 2015. And whereas Brad R. Buchanan was an integral part of the ongoing training program in place at the treatment plant to ensure the success of future operators. And whereas Brad R. Buchanan has retired from his position of treatment plant operator with the Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility, effect of October 8, 2018, after completing 32 years and four months of full-time service. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Brad R. Buchanan for his years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the Water and Sewer Utility, and that best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Brad R. Buchanan and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that the resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Brad R. Buchanan. Introduced and adopted the 16th day of October, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. Mike, would you like to say anything on behalf of Brad?
I just, I know we want to try and keep the meeting going tonight, but I just want to really highlight and congratulate Brad. It was a wonderful career. He's worked that difficult second shift. You miss out on a lot of family activities and occasions and things like that, and he did just a fantastic job. We've lost a lot of good experience there, but as mentioned in there, he's part of our training program, so we'll have good operators to back the line.
Great, thank you. Anybody on council? Ken, anything? You guys want to say anything on behalf of Brad?
No, I'd like to just on behalf of the council myself, thank Brad for his years of service. I mean, long years of service. Again, I didn't realize he was on second shift. Not very well acquainted with Brad, unfortunately, but I wish him a long, happy retirement, and it's well deserved, and you will be missed. But again, please, train your replacement to do what you did just as well. Thank you.
Motion, please.
You'll move to approve Resolution 11990-101618, a resolution of appreciation of Brad R. Buchanan, retiring treatment plant operator.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. Item five is a council proclamation for Small Business Saturday, coming up here November 24. Catherine, if you'd please read that in.
Council proclamation number 18-13, Small Business Saturday, November 24, 2018. Whereas the government of Oak Creek, Wisconsin celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses, with employees in the United States are responsible for 65.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community. And whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encouraged them to shop small all year long. And whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently owned businesses was to support their community, 64%. And whereas the city of Oak Creek, Wisconsin supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukavich, mayor of the Oak Creek, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Introduced and adopted the 16th day of October, 2018.
Thank you, Catherine. Any comments from council concerning the proclamation?
No, I would encourage you, get out there November 24, or on any day, and support our small businesses in Oak Creek. We have many of them that are very fine, have been here for a lot of years, so please get out there and buy local.
Motion, please.
Lorick will move to adopt council proclamation number 18-13, Small Business Saturday, November 24, 2018.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds. Bridget?
Good evening. In front of you tonight is another refunding. We had in TIF 11, on June 21, 2016, the city issued 5.8 million for taxable development incentives. This was directly related to our development agreement with the hotel, as well as Frederd. So this entire issuance are those incentives. Some of you may remember, and some may not, that as this issuance went forward in 2016, it was for a part of what Frederd could have received as a development incentive. It was roughly estimated at 4 million. Things changed during the course of the past two years with an amendment to our agreement with Frederd, and the number of parking stalls, and a few different things in that development agreement that was directly tied to the incentive. So we ended up not issuing as much incentive as we originally thought. So this just goes to the benefit of why we do some short-term borrowing with some of these incentives or debt, because we were able to reduce the size of that borrowing by a little over $600,000. So that's why you're seeing, yes, it's a refunding, but the price is different, different dollar amount, down to 5.1 million. As we went through our typical process with Quarles &amp; Brady, and Kevin Mullen from HSC, as well as Moody's, Moody's went ahead and they went through the process with us and reaffirmed our AA2 rating. So that's another significant positive for the city. I have Kevin here tonight, who can speak to the interest rate and where we came at today.
Well, I'm happy to report that the city was able to market this bond issue at a net interest rate of 4.07% all-in interest rate. I did email Andrew and Bridget last week. I was worried that interest rates had moved pretty dramatically, you may have filed that in the news, and we were expecting interest rates probably 10 to 15 basis points higher than this as of last week. But thankfully, as we entered this week, you know, some of the instability in the marketplace settled down, and we got some really good direction in the bond market at the end of the day yesterday and heading into today. And so we were really comfortable that this was a very, you know, fair and stable price, given the current marketplace. Some of the, you know, economic situations, macroeconomic factors that were influencing interest rates as we entered the market as of last week, you probably realize the Fed has continued to raise short-term interest rates, and that Fed's fund rates have pushed short rates up. The market kind of reacted to some strong economic news at the end of September, which really kind of fueled interest rates and pushed them higher at the very beginning of the month. But thankfully, things have settled down. You've seen some volatility in the stock market, which has created some strength in the bond market, and so we feel we were able to take advantage of that with this marketing.
Questions for Kevin? Martin? Okay. Bruzen?
Thank you.
If seeing none, motion.
You'll move to approve Resolution 11991-101618, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately 5.1 million taxable general obligation refunding bond series 2018D.
Kuzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Item number seven, consideration of a motion to approve and authorize police vehicle purchase. And that is a 2019 Chevy Equinox. If Chief Anderson here.
Good evening, Chief Anderson, Oak Creek Police Department. This request is for a replacement of a detective vehicle. It was not in our 2018 budget for the allotted amount of vehicles that we requested, because we didn't have the current pricing back then for this vehicle. The vehicle that we're looking to replace is 11 years old, over, probably close to 100,000 miles on it now. It's a vehicle that has been used for when we have training around the state, the minivan. It's getting to the point where it's not as reliable to send out to other places. So the, instead of trying to budget, we have money in the line item for this, and it can absorb the difference in the rest of the police budget for the year, instead of in a future year, asking for the full amount to be added to the police vehicle line for this. It is state pricing, this is the best price we will get on this vehicle, and it will be part of our detective unmarked fleet.
Questions, Chief Anderson? Chris? What engine is in here? Is it like a V8, a V6? I didn't see any attachment here, not probably a V8, but...
It's probably either a 6 or a 4. I can quickly try to look through the spec. I don't have that right in front of me.
One ring, guys. Thank you.
It is a four-cylinder, 1.5-turbo DOHC four-cylinder engine.
Thank you.
Don't you ask what color car, but it either.
I was just, because it's the turbo, I don't have a problem with it. The four cylinders, they've been having issues with it, so I just wanted to make sure, so that was the reason for it. Thanks.
Any other questions concerning the Equinox?
Interior color? We haven't told you that.
Seeing nothing. Seeing no questions, motion on seven, please.
Lorick will move that the common council approve and authorize the police department's purchase of one 2019 Chevy Equinox for a total cost of $23,754.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to thank whoever put the agenda order together today as well.
Thanks, Chief.
Can we have a closed session?
Yeah. Item eight is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for the property at 7869 South 13th. Doug?
Thanks. This CSM would subdivide the property at 7869 South 13th Street into three lots, as depicted on the screens and on the monitors before you recall. We called out last year, there was a certified survey map that was approved that incorporated several of the residential parcels along 13th Street. Those are also being included as part of that lot, one area. And those CSMs still had to be recorded. Council will note that proposed lots 2 and 3 on the southern end of the proposed CSM do not have, although they're adjacent to Drexel Avenue, do not have access to a public street. Access will be afforded through easements, through parcel 1, and it's part of a larger development plan for that entire parcel. Plan Commission has reviewed the proposed CSM, they have recommended their approval. Any questions?
Any questions regarding the properties? Seeing none. Planning had no issues whatsoever with this. Through with minimal discussion, really. Just preparation for development, so. No other questions? Motion.
Lorick will move that the council adopt Resolution number 11994-101618, a resolution approving a certified survey map for John Thompson Highgate LLC for the property at 7869 South 13th Street.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Item number nine is consideration of an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties at 7266 and 7328 South Howell. Doug?
Thank you. MVAAH Partners, excuse me, is requesting that the planned land use map and for the comprehensive plan for those properties at 7266, 7328 South Howell Avenue be amended from planned industrial to mixed residential in anticipation of a future request for a multifamily residential development for these properties. Specifically, it would be for workforce housing. And I did send over a PowerPoint to you last night. Hume on with MVAAH is with us this afternoon, this evening, and if you have any questions about that, or if you'd like him to go through that, you can certainly do that. But let me first kind of preface how we got to this point. Affordable mixed-use residential, and specifically workforce housing, is something that, you know, a lot of communities deal with in terms of their workforce development issues. And this site along Howell Avenue is obviously adjacent to several business parks along the bus line, and relatively isolated from the residential neighborhoods. Also, the current planned industrial land use designation, for those of you who are familiar with the site, the configuration of those lots, not only these two lots, but lots in the north, present some challenges for modern industrial development. And that's just a bit of background, it's not, you know, it's not the deciding factor in terms of whether or not to change the land use or not, but it just kind of sets a stage for, you know, why the commission, why the council may want to consider a change to the future land use map in that area. So the Plan Commission did review this proposed request at a public hearing on September 25. And the Plan Commission do impart concerns regarding the dimensional constraints of the properties, and the desire to treat this whole area, not just these two parcels, but the additional parcels to the north, in the same manner. They did, or to, they did not approve the resolution, I should say, that would change the land use map, and in essence, did not recommend to the council that these changes be made. Staff's role is to support the recommendation of the Plan Commission in that regard. I'm sure there will be questions, and staff is ready to address those questions. Sure, Mr. On is available to go over the PowerPoint, the brief PowerPoint if you want, or to answer any questions that you may have. But with that in mind, in support of the Plan Commission's non-adoption of the resolution, it is the recommendation that the planned use category not be changed to mixed residential at this point.
Great, thank you, Doug. I'm sure you guys might have some questions as to how the Plan Commission bribed at this. There's quite a bit of discussion there, but this does warrant a little bit of discussion.
I just, Dukenyak, third district, I mean, what were the major concerns of the Planning Commission in this, you know, proposed amendment?
Well, again, it was a change to a comprehensive plan, and it involved the property that HV AH is looking to develop. And there's, to the north, there's, I want to say, there's two single-family homes and some easements that won't be in the PowerPoint that I'm aware of. But it was a triangular piece that stretched along Howell Avenue, and they felt that the whole thing shouldn't, for lack of a better word, now, I don't know if I'm summing this upright, but...
Carve out.
Carve out just that, that one piece. That the whole triangle should have went, but the applicant only has control of that one piece of property, so everything to the north would have depended on the owners coming forward and asking for that change. And this, and planning, it got a little foggy. They just felt the overall thought plan would be to do it all at once, than to do it in pieces. And just the credit, you know, that little triangular piece has two residential homes on it, and it narrows down, and on the backside of it, there's some easements, and I want to say some county land there that almost make it impossible to make the development larger going east. So it's just a funny situation what happened there. It was a split vote, I want to say it was a 45 vote. So, I don't know if I summed that up well, but if they could, if you can find that map that depicts that triangle, you guys would get essence of what they were talking about. They wanted to include the whole portion there going to the north.
I mean, it's in the packet.
Oh, it is, okay. So that's really where the discrepancy came. The neighbors, I know, came in, but they didn't speak that night on the issue.
One did. Jamalyn.
Oh, did she speak?
Yep.
And I think she was more concerned as to what could go there. There were questions as to if it stayed industrial, what could go there versus residential, and of course, you have the model of what they're going to do here in the fall. So, I hope I didn't make it any flawed here for you guys. You guys did a really great job.
I think that's a fair characterization of the events at the Plan Commission. I think, just, again, in support of the recommendation, I think there are other factors at play, which certainly was not an easy decision for them, but, you know, certainly recognize their concerns with respect to the ultimate land use for that entire area.
Yeah, I would agree, and, you know, we started to go into areas, you know, we had the PowerPoint and the pictures, and that wasn't the topic. The topic was the comprehensive plan and the rezone. So we tried to keep it at that, and unfortunately, it bled to the other properties that weren't involved in it, that should be included, so.
Does anyone have any questions of staff regarding the process, or the applicant is here as well?
Mike?
Alderman Toman, fourth district. When you talk about that triangle, Doug, are you talking about all that A1 and back of it too, or is it just that up to the P1 on the north end?
I apologize, I don't have the graphic with the location map, but it's...
Well, the whole, that whole area, there's one boundary that extends all the way to Rossin.
Yeah. For those of you who are familiar with that, the Old North Shore right away, where kind of where the bike trail sits right now, that really is a physical barrier for, that kind of separates the development along Howell Avenue from the future development to the east of that. And that's, that's a constraining factor, regardless if it develops planned industrial or mixed residential.
Yeah, if I remember right, the county actually owns that A1 part, and to get to that A1 part, I think, I think they'd have to come off Rossin to access that.
So when you're talking about changes to the north, you're not talking about, obviously, the existing residential, because it's already designated RS3, right?
Oh, just to be clear, this is not a change of zoning.
I understand, I understand.
This is, because right now, they're showing it as planned industrial.
Right.
This would change the designation on the two southern lots to mixed residential.
It was essentially the shaded area, or the hash mark area, that they're asking to change in the comp plan, would now become multifamily, and that would be a buffer between the industrial and the thing.
I get that part, but my question is in reference to what would butt up against this if it was changed to residential, mixed-use residential. I mean, there's already residential to the north there, so my question would be, would that would blend in then with the residential existing?
I think a case could be made that it would fit in with the existing zoning. I think that that becomes a little bit more problematic when you look at the difference between the future land uses, and that's why, and it's not a matter for discussion this evening, but in any event, whether it's through the comprehensive plan amendment process that we're going through right now, or through any additional action that the council likes staff to pursue, we should be looking at that entire area almost as a continuous land use, whether it be by separate action tonight, or whether it's an additional direction that staff would bring back to the Plan Commission through the process in the future.
I, myself, at planning, was a yes vote, and I thought it created a good buffer going to the residential transitioning from the industrial versus a hard cutoff keeping it industrial. That was my line of thinking.
Yeah, my concern too would be, how long is this property going to sit there? I mean, if we decide not to, not to make the change here, I mean, it's been sitting there forever right now.
True, true. I think, you know, to get something in there industrial-wise, it could be a number of things that could go in there from warehousing on up, but it has been sitting there for a long time. I've thought about that.
What are the challenges on the industrial side?
The depth, primarily, the access. If you take a look at that same map, just for scale, Alderman Toman, you can see that the, kind of the typical industrial development, business development that's taking place in the Oak Creek Commerce Park, which by no means in today's development standards are large buildings. I'd say they're medium-sized buildings. Just to give that scale, I mean, obviously could not happen on those lots, would have to be on a much smaller scale.
That's all I, that's all I got right now.
Doug, I did have a question for you. The mixed residential land use designation, is that, is that a specific designation, or is that the typical designation for any multifamily property we have in the city?
That'd be the typical, really the only designation that we have for, aside from mixed use, that we would have for multifamily.
Okay. And do we, do we consider, and it's obviously single-family there now, did we consider traffic egress on Howell there in terms of safety or anything?
I think certainly whether it's, again, whether it's planned industrial or mixed residential, anyone who's looking to develop those two properties or any of those properties, is going to need to work closely with the state of Wisconsin on access to Howell Avenue. So yes, there have been some preliminary discussions about that, but nothing definitive.
Are the four homes that are there currently occupied, unoccupied? Do we know?
You know, I can't speak with any certainty of that. I believe that they're occupied.
Alderman Dukenyak, third district. I don't know if the developer is far enough along in a proposal. Is there an idea of what the value of that development would be if it were to go up?
Would you like to come up, sir? We'll need your name and address, please.
Good evening, council, mayor and council members. My name is Hume On. I'm senior vice president at MVAAH Partners. I live at 3048 Mary Kay Lane in Glenview, Illinois. So we estimate that this development will be around 12 to 13 million dollars once completed.
Roll call.
Sorry. Sunrich, anything else? I noticed in your, in terms of, because we haven't actually, since I've been on the council, we haven't actually have an entertaining, legally, we can obviously designate these individuals for these certain income levels, but that's easily laid out in the plan? How does that work exactly?
So, the zoning is the zone, the land use is mixed residential. Any zoning change or accommodation would be to probably potentially an RM1 with a planned use development or conditional use for that size of building. The mechanism for meeting those, the workforce definition, if you will, that's in terms of the financing mechanism, presumably with... of the financing, financing mechanism presumably with WIDA or with the state. And the city itself does not have a zoning category for workforce housing. It's mixed residential. It's RM1.
It's just the market they're shooting for to get those rentals. Greg?
I, too, at the meeting, voted yes on this. My only holdup coming into this meeting was over as a member of the Planning Commission, basically overturning what they voted to deny. However, if I, did I hear you correctly, Doug, that we can do separate action to direct staff to look into including that? Because that was a holdup at planning, was having the comprehensive plan, note industrial north of here, switch this on the comprehensive plan to mixed use and just piecemeal it all. Can we look at doing all that?
Should the council choose to adopt this ordinance or amending the comprehensive plan? I would suggest, and certainly City Attorney will correct me if I'm wrong, that it's a standalone, this is the request. And to amend that, to include other properties at this point, probably would not be appropriate. But given that, I mean, if there was a feeling from the council that they would like to see staff revisit the future land use for those properties and go through that process, I think that we will hear that and we will take the appropriate action.
Greg? Chris?
I was just going to mention what Commissioner Correll had stated, that carving out this triangle land is difficult as this entire area potentially fitting into the comprehensive plan makes more sense. So maybe mixed use development would make more sense, but it just depends on making this work right now as it is.
Alderman Dukenac, 3rd District. That could take forever, right? Because wouldn't it, you'd have to rely upon the current property owners there to agree to abandon that area so that it could make it available for development. So that land is just going to sit there potentially for a longer period of time than already has sat. If you look at what's on your screen, certainly looks far more appealing to me than what's there right now.
Well, again, you know, we're dealing with the land in front of us right now, as Doug kind of pointed out. So I mean, the decision is, what do we do with this piece of property that abuts an RS and an industrial property? I looked at it as a mild buffer going into the residential. If it stays residential in the future, if we want to, if they so desired that triangle, you could change the comprehensive plan again if I'm correct to incorporate those properties.
Certainly any, the council, Plan Commission are able to direct staff to take a look at changes to the comprehensive plan. That's certainly within your purview.
Go ahead, Jim. A question from Melissa. I'm, I get a sense there's really not a clear direction from the council right now. There is a middle ground here, Melissa. I think we could potentially entertain a tabling of this motion and directing staff to, and the developer to potentially explore the other properties in terms of incorporating them into this plan change. How do you feel, or what's your precision on that or your thinking?
I think it's, the council certainly has options. I mean, for it, it has an ordinance to consider for adoption or not. That ordinance, I think as Alderman Lorick was pointing out, only involves the two parcels that have been noticed, for which there was a public hearing before Plan Commission. Granted, it's my understanding, a lot of the discussion, that Plan Commission involved other contiguous properties and certainly to the north in this triangular section. Having said that, I would say that independent of the ordinance that's here tonight on the two parcels, certainly it could be an option, Alderman Gale, to hold the matter, table it, or postpone it to a date certain. And then the other option could be, as had been discussed already, if there's some consideration, and I think we heard that, for staff to take a look at the properties to the north. But this isn't the question you're asking, but I would say additionally, given the discussion before the Plan Commission, as far as the minutes reflect at least, whether or not any recommendation or consideration by the Plan Commission could have pulled in those parcels, I would submit that that would have been in error to the extent that the public hearing was held, it was properly noticed, and it only held those two parcels. So hopefully that's of some assistance. But I would say yes, there could be a motion to hold essentially to table and/or postpone to a date certain.
I think, just maybe to provide some background along those lines, I think the timetable is established such that these products are done using tax credits. And the application deadline for, is it WIDA? For, for tax credits is December 13th. So another kind of rewind on the whole cycle, wouldn't get that in place by that time? Not that that's the determining factor. Just a bit, it's just information that's-
Those are yearly cycles, Doug?
I believe so, yes.
I think Andrew wants to talk first.
Just, just a couple points. I think, you know, project's attractive. It looks great. I know we're not, you know, discussing the site plan and issues that are inherent in the site as it sits today. And I would definitely want to be deferential to the mayor, knowing where he wound up on this, on Plan Commission as well. But I would just say that I'm not hearing anything along these lines, but I would just caution the council to, you know, future actions of not supporting the recommendations of the Plan Commission. What I would look for is intervening factors, new information, and maybe something got a little bogged down or a little murky at Plan Commission and you have some new information tonight, or maybe, maybe have found some middle ground or some compromise that might, might make sense. But I would just say that, you know, by and large, absent, you know, large intervening, you know, factors or information, you know, largely want to support the recommendation of the Plan Commission. As a staff, we are not, you know, severely emotional one way or another to this proposal. Certainly there is a need and a market segment to be met for this type of housing in our community. I think as a staff, we would acknowledge that. But again, I think, I think that unless there's something new, new information, new pieces of the presentation that were absent. We had a full complement of the Plan Commission, full nine members there, and it was a very, there was nine?
No, there was, I think there were two missing.
Five-four vote.
Yeah, the rule call reads the full commission.
I thought there was someone else. Okay.
As I was saying.
It was one vote, yeah.
It was a full vote, and that's where it wound up. So I just caution the council to take a look at that and give that, give that some deference, you know, usually and normally.
Ken? Greg, can I ask, initially, in the minutes, I think it was in the meeting from September, you had stated, at least it said there that you had concurred with Alderman Guzikowski and Commissioner Correll on the, not wanting to carve out the pieces of land, and then what you later said, kind of a, I think, a little change of thought process. What got you over the hump there?
So after that discussion regarding not wanting to get in the habit of carving out pieces out of the comprehensive plan and changing them to fit what development might come, I agreed with that portion. I then stated, however I look at this, as a catalyst to visiting the other pieces of land around that and changing the comprehensive plan on those as well. So that's why I ended up voting yes, because I felt it was an appropriate use of that land. And I felt that at a later date, we could look at the remaining parcels around there and change those to fit versus having just them piecemealed. Because, correct, the, the north triangle is, in the comprehensive plan, is industrial, but it's not zoned that way.
It is, as Commissioner Johnson stated in here, that it's listed as planned industrial, but the sites are not big enough for that. And without combining other parcels, it would be difficult to make a decision without the point being included.
Right, correct. So I said, I believe I said something along the lines of, I'll vote yes to change the comprehensive plan for this parcel, with the hope that we're going to revisit that triangle and change that from planned industrial, which obviously wouldn't fit somehow on that triangle.
Just a point of clarification for the City Attorney, if I may. I don't believe you need property owner concurrence to change the future land use map. So that's something the city can do. Maybe that's, if the council is really interested in moving forward with this proposal, maybe there is something to that. And maybe, maybe Ken, Ken's suggestion or Melissa's suggestion to table this and take a look at it, as long as that may not impact the timelines for the developer, maybe we can just do that and maybe get some more information for the council to consider or options on how to proceed.
And I do think that was the major hangup at planning with them, that if there was consideration to change, you know, came back around, I think it would have been a different possibility. It wasn't correct.
Certainly there was some sentiment towards revisiting the land use designation of those properties, yes.
Either going to stay industrial, or it's, you know, you're going to move forward multifamily with it. No, I do respect what Andrew said. I do think it just, we encompassed properties that weren't actually on the agenda that night, and that kind of muddied up the conversation. That was my personal belief in the seven minutes. I look at it as a buffer between the industrial going forward, because as our engineer that sits on here, Brian said, and Doug, you repeated it, it's just not deep enough to really house industrial. It would be a tough property to get industrial use on. Not to say it couldn't be done, but you've got to find that right to that.
Yeah, you know, the mayor, the other part of that, even if we entertain a change of the comp plan to move it from industrial to-
Residential.
Mixed residential. I mean, there's no guarantee those folks eventually, those three, last remaining three single-family homes ever, ever sell to a developer.
Correct. Correct. Even if the comp plans change, it could stay there perpetuity.
I mean, if the goal is to get it all, you have no control.
Well, you know, I made the statement at planning, this isn't a goal to get anybody out of their home or anything. It's just to have some clarity going forward. We're kind of caught in this property, because there's a lot of discussion about that A1 property and back about hooking up with that. Kerry explained why that couldn't be done in it.
It is a quirky piece of property, but right away in there.
And really, it looks like there's a lot of land in the back, but there's a lot of challenges getting to it, as Doug alluded to earlier. Any comments, sir? I know we're doing all the talking, but.
I just appreciate your time. I, I do just want to clarify with Doug, if there is a tabling of this for further conversation, is there a way to do so and still stay on track for the zoning process?
My response to that would be yes, provided that we do not need to recycle the process to include another notification in public hearing.
Comp plan change required public hearing?
It does.
If staff came back, actually recommended a comp plan change?
Well, I mean, if that were to be the direction that the council wanted to go, I would suggest that that could be accomplished through two separate actions.
You would, you're saying this property and then you treat the properties to the north separately?
That would be one avenue to pursue, yes.
To save the time factor, basically.
Would staff bring that forward or landowners have to do that?
That's something that, you know, we would certainly work with the landowners, but ultimately the-
Land use is a staff-
It's the, the city has the, and the Plan Commission, Common Council have the say with respect to the future land use map.
What are our, what's our meeting schedule? What's your timing, sir, in terms of what you need for your credit application?
It's due December 13th, as Doug indicated, so I'm, when, so Doug, could you lay out when, if we did push it back, what that approval process would look like?
Sure. I mean, and just for clarification for the council, you indicated to me that in order to be a valid application, the zoning has to be in place. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So that, recognize that that requires a separate action in front of the Plan Commission, Common Council with a public hearing. And in order to meet that timetable, you would have to, I think you'd have one meeting cycle, and that would involve some, some, some pre-advertising on that part of the city, which is not unheard of. So I would suggest that if that's the course of action that you're looking to take, you could do that at your next meeting and still have the ability for the applicant to meet that, that cycle. But again, that presupposes that no additional public hearing would be required for those, for, you know, for those properties or-
The key question is, do we need to re-notice for the comp plan amendment itself? And I think if we table to a date certain, that answer is potentially no.
Correct. I believe that there's already been a public hearing on these two parcels for this ordinance that's here tonight, that's already been held before the Plan Commission. I would echo Doug's sentiments to the extent of clarity, I guess. If there's going to be any consideration beyond these two parcels, I would, for purposes of explanation here tonight, just submit that that's a separate track, meaning there is not a possibility of catching that process up to what this one is on if we're going to meet the deadline that Mr. On has indicated. So if that's something that staff is going to look at, I would say that that's a different thing, independent of any motion to adopt the ordinance before it tonight, if that's the council's consideration. If it's a motion to postpone to a date certain, essentially holding it, that's another. If it's a motion to end discussion on the matter entirely, that would be a motion to table, so.
So, so really, with the subject property, we're really only dealing with a timeline for the rezone, and of course, sequencing the approval such that the rezone is subsequent to the comp plan amendment, if that's the council's desire to change that. So as Melissa pointed out, the discussions on the other properties to the north are going to be completely separate, and maybe that is a way to assuage the concerns and discussion that took place at the Plan Commission. We can accomplish that for the applicant, and the staff can bring back to council something that comports to that timeline for you to consider in making this decision on the comp plan amendment, if we table. There's Mudd?
Alderman Tolman, I, you know-
After you, Mike.
If you're, you know, if, if, I think common sense kind of should prevail here, because if you're looking at, you know, if I put myself in one of those homes to the north, I live there, I mean, I think most people in this room would say they would want residential versus industrial. It's, and, and the mayor makes a good point, it acts as a buffer to those homes, existing homes. So I respect what the Plan Commission has to say. I seldom vote against, if they, they don't recommend, I seldom change my vote, but I'm prepared tonight to go forward with this, with this ordinance. I'm willing to make that motion.
Alderman Dukenac.
I think we should vote on it, because given the fact that the Plan Commission was almost split on it, basically, they were split, okay? You look at the, you look at the total picture, and with the council's vote, I think that maybe what should be, what should prevail tonight, depending on what we feel is a body. And the respect can work both ways with the Plan Commission and the Common Council. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Mike. And Alderman Dukenac, 3rd District, being the rookie on, on the council, I, I am very honest in that I do not completely understand the, the process of making changes to the comprehensive plan amendment. All due respect to the Planning Commission and to staff- All due respect to the Planning Commission and to staff, certainly, I, I wouldn't want to make a decision that, that jeopardizes a relationship between a couple of the city entities, but, Mike, I'm with you. I see this as a developer trying to make an improvement in an area of our community, and, and we're putting a big roadblock there. We're not allowing this, this gentleman to do that. And I understand there is a, a process that needs to take place, and I don't know that process. When you were, when you were talking, Andrew, when you said clear as mud, absolutely, I, I was lost in about the third sentence, and that's not, that's not your fault, that's my fault. But, right, common sense, a $13 million development on that parcel of land, I mean, what else is gonna go there? Industrial, and it's, it's already been mentioned that, it's highly unlikely that that will. So we're getting all hung up because of, of a couple of words, you know, for changes in zoning? I, I don't know, just, to me, Mike, I'm with you, common sense, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Why would we, why would we not want to, to develop? And, and please provide me that, that argument, then, why wouldn't we want to develop that, that parcel of property, you know, with this residential housing?
This is your call. We make, we'll make it happen. It sounds like there's an appetite. We can make that happen, whether we approve the ordinance tonight, or we sort out the process a little better for you and table it till the next meeting, and, and you guys take up the discussion on the ordinance at that time. Either way is valid. I think I could speak for Doug. If the Plan Commission had recommended approval, the staff would be recommending approval. So it's, it's up to you. We're, again, not tied, you know, won't feel slighted or disrespected, you know, it's, it's totally up to you, and we're, we're comfortable, very comfortable with any decision made tonight.
And I, I just want to be certain that I, I'm not making an uninformed decision, that I'm understanding what this process is all about, but I, I don't see any argument strongly against this, but I've said my piece.
Greg, just one last question for clarification. If we approve, if we approve this ordinance and move forward tonight, we can still, as a separate action, look at the future land use of the surrounding parcels, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. And that would address the concerns brought up at planning? Okay, I'm fine going forward then, too.
Mike, do you want to do a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2915, an ordinance adopting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for the properties of 7266 and 7328 South Hall Avenue.
Dukneak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
No.
Lorik.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, thank you.
Thank you. Again, Doug, we'll, we'll have a conversation to address the other parcels going forward to accommodate planning. Item number 10 is consideration of a resolution approving the Orchard Hills Development Agreement for the design and installation of the public improvements at 8300, 8304, 8310, 8380, South 27th Street, and 8370, South Orchard Way. Mike, did I get that?
Yes, that's me. Thank you, Mayor. Just want to get the graphic up on the screen. Okay, this is the development agreement for the Orchard Hills Development on various properties, 8300 block of South 27th Street, that is the HSI apartment complex, and development agreement spells out the conditions for the design and construction and the inspection of the construction as, as it proceeds on all the public infrastructure, and that would include sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, and of course, the public street and sidewalks and, and street lighting. The agreement further defines some phasing of the work, which was really derived from kind of a lessons learned on the, on the developer's previous development, the one over at Drexel and Pennsylvania Avenue, where were there, there was some, a bit of mess on the site at, at times with all the contractors working together and access for emergency vehicles. So that all got ironed out in this development. So recommendation is that this development agreement gets signed, so the development can proceed.
Thank you, Mike. Questions from the council? Saying none? Motion.
Clark moves that the council adopt resolution number 11996-101618, a resolution approving the Orchard Hills Development Agreement for the design and installation of public improvements at 8300, 8304, 8310, and 8380, South 27th Street, and 8370, South Orchard Way.
Dukneak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 11, 11 is a resolution approving a stormwater management practice maintenance agreement with HSI Orchard Hills LLC for the multifamily development located at the 8300 block of South 27th Street. Mike?
So like all developments, half-acre and larger development, there are stormwater management requirements, and this site, of course, is no different. It has four detention ponds, two wet ponds on the north end, one dry pond on the south portion of the site, and one on the west portion of the site in the vicinity of the, the clubhouse. And so again, this is a standard agreement that, in which the land order indicates they are committed to maintaining these stormwater facilities, and that stays with the property, even if it changes hands.
Questions from Mike concerning the stormwater management? None? Motion.
Clark moves that the council adopt resolution number 11992-101618, a resolution approving a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement with HSI Orchard Hills LLC for their multifamily development located at 8300, South 27th Street.
Dukneak, second. Roll call.
Alderman and Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving a revised state municipal agreement for the complete statelet highway project along South 241, which is 27th Street from Drexel to College Avenue. Mike?
So this is a third and final revision on the state municipal agreement for the 27th Street construction project, which took place, it's completed, it was done in 2015 and into 2016. The agreement covered various items that were basically city requested, and city response, the financial responsibility therefore on the city on various items such as decorative street lighting, decorative crosswalks, trash receptacles, benches, median monuments, landscaping, wayfinding signage. This was a beautification of the, of the construction project for that two-mile-long project. City of Franklin, being that that's a, that's a roadway on a shared border, they've entered into a, a similar agreement as well. So the reason, the only reason for this agreement that is before you now in revised form is that the state is requiring that, because the city has a large credit, cost credit in, in the balance here, when the city reconstructed West Drexel Avenue in 2012, we took on a lot of costs to construct to the plans, they were preliminary plans at, at the time, for Drexel Avenue as it approached 27th Street. And we did that knowing that this project was coming up just a few years later, did not want to tear that up twice, and so we came to an agreement which was defined in a memorandum of, of understanding, which is in the packet, basically saying that, with the understanding that the city was going to do those, that work on Drexel Avenue, on the, on the west end of the project, as it approaches 27th Street, there would be a, an accounting of the, the money spent by the city, and that the state would then apply that credit towards the 27th Street costs. And basically, that, that amount has been, has been calculated and rounded out to be $895,000. So that amount is now incorporated into this agreement as a credit, and if this gets approved, then there, there will be no monies laid out by the city for the money that it owes for the 27th Street improvements. Just go a little bit further, that, to make sure that we achieved our full credit, that there, there was work that was done on Oak Creek Stormwater Facilities, sanitary sewer and water main, that they had to include in the credit, otherwise, we would not realize that. So what the plan then would be, would be to, for the city to invoice those costs back to the utility. So there would be cash coming back to the city from the utility for the work that was done on, on their facilities.
Explanation. Questions for Mike? Ken?
Actually, kind of a global kind of question, Mike. Do we have more of these kind of arrangements out there?
Thankfully, no. We, we, we are wrapping up a lot of these, these SMAs, these state municipal agreements, because if you recall, we had the Nicholson Bridge, we had the Marquette Bridge, costs on the Howell Avenue project, we've got an agreement now with the county for some cost shares on 13th Street project, but a lot of these larger products, projects are, are wrapping up. But unfortunately, too, the accounting of these, of these projects, they, they go on for, you know, years.
I just want to make sure we, we have them in case, you know, you and I and the rest of them, we don't do these jobs forever, so.
Right.
As long as someone knows about them.
This, this is, this was a big one, and Bridget and I spent a good amount of time going through this agreement to, to make sure everything was adding up and making sense. And, and so we're happy to, if we can wrap this up, we'd be very happy to do so tonight.
Good work. No, no, you know, you bring it up, it starts, for those of us that were here long enough, it starts to jog memory, so. Glad you guys are around, like Ken said, remember that kind of stuff. Appreciate it. And so does the city. Any other questions? Okay, motion?
Clark moves that the council adopt resolution number 11995-101618, a resolution approving the revised state municipal agreement for the completed statelet highway project along State Highway 241, 27th Street, from West Drexel Avenue to West College Avenue.
Dukneak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 13 is licensing. We usually turn it over to Alderman Krikowski.
And I, I can take that, Alderman, yeah, I, I'm on the license committee, so, my fellow council members, that's item number 13 in the common council report. I hope you've had the opportunity to take a look at the license committee report, and are there any questions in regard to that committee report? If none, I move that the council adopt the license committee recommendations as listed on the 101618 license committee report.
Gil, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item, item 14 is our vendor summary report. Please take a look. Any questions? Please direct them to Bridget, Finance Director, she's sitting right out front. When you are satisfied, motion.
Gil moved to approve the October 10th, 2018 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $661,409.49.
Guzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 15 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent G, to consider the claim of Pronto Laundromat LLC for the recovery of unlawful taxes on the property at 8978 South York Court. Common Council President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gil moved to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, sub one, sub G, to consider the claim of Pronto Laundromat LLC for the recovery of unlawful taxes on the property at 8978 South York Court.
Guzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and reconvene at its conclusion.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 17, consideration of a resolution authorizing a refund of personal property taxes to Pronto Laundromat LLC.
Gil moved to approve resolution 11993-101618, a resolution authorizing refund of personal property taxes to Pronto Laundromat LLC in the amount of $3,425.64.
Gil, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Great, thank you, good night.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.